At this time, we're going to have the Fudge of Allegiance by Mayor Matt Searnsy followed by the invocation by Pastor Al Mulberry. Pastor Mulberry can lead us in the invocation.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Father, it is once again we thank you. We thank you for this opportunity to come together. We thank you, God, as we come to do the business of the city. We ask for your divine guidance and purpose to be made manifest for thy people. God, you said in all thy ways acknowledge you, and you will direct our path. Give us directions for this day. You know what we face. You know the trials and the tests. Thank you for healing. Thank you for goodness and for mercy. Continue to cover us everywhere. Bless us, I pray. In Jesus's name, thank God. Amen.
All right, thank you.
Roll call.
We'll have a roll call at this time. Mayor Hill. Vice Mayor Brown. Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Borum. Commissioner Borum.
It's muted.
Present.
Thank you. That completes roll call, Mayor.
All members are accounted for. We have a quorum. Moving forward to public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment can dial 386-329-0100, extension zero, or you can leave a comment in the YouTube live chat. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one here for public comment, we'll close public comment at this time, but move forward to item three on the agenda, which is recognitions. Recognizations of Mary Lawson Brown. Thirty-six years of dedicated service as a city commissioner. We've got some special congratulations coming up at this time. First up, on the roster, Senator Audrey Gibson.
Am I? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Sunny, you got something on the screen?
Do I have?
Okay. Senator, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? Thank you so much for allowing me. I understood that we have like five minutes collectively, so I will rush right through and I don't know if, can you see me? Because I can't see me anymore, so.
We see.
Hi, Vice Mayor. I just, I'm so excited to have been allowed to be participatory this evening. You know, Palaca has a special place in my heart. Not only do I have family there, and certainly the Vice Mayor is part of that family. Palaca was in my Senate district when I first came to the Senate in 2011. And so I just wanted to make sure that I got on this Zoom, and I will be certainly sending this proclamation to the Vice Mayor for all of her many years of service. Service not only to your community, but to the state. She never, ever came to Tallahassee in all the years that I've been there since 2002, and not stopped by my office to lull me about Palaca issues. And so I'm so, I'm so sad that she's leaving, but I'm so excited to be able to participate and put on the record how much I appreciate her and honor her. The entire Senate District Six honors her as she retires just from that rostrum, but not from her work in the community. So I'm very appreciative of this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hot.
Thank you very much, Senator. Vice Mayor, chime in whenever you feel like it. Next up, next up, Ms. Sharon Berry, and Director of Membership Relations, Florida League of Cities. Can you, you're muted. Can you get a speaker view, Sunny?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
It's an honor for me to be here representing the Florida League of Cities. I'm the Director for Membership Relations, but I'm also someone who has been mentored by Commissioner Brown for the 37 years that I have been at the Florida League of Cities. It is just wonderful to be here tonight to recognize her as she retires. I am being waved at by my husband, Pat. I am being waved at by my husband, Pastor Berryan, who wants to actually join me on this Zoom, Pastor Berryan. She has been wonderful both to myself and my husband, and he wanted to make sure that he joined me as we said a collective goodbye to her this evening. She has been a mentor to most of us at the Florida League of Cities. She has served on practically every committee and every trust that we have at the Florida League of Cities. She has been recognized in a number of ways, including receiving our highest honor, E. Harris Drew, the E. Harris Drew Award. So we would have been remiss not to have joined you this evening to say congratulations, Commissioner Brown. We love you. We honor you, and we will miss seeing your face at the Florida League of Cities, but you better believe that we will be visiting you in Palaca. If not in our official capacity, certainly personally, my husband and I and our family. So congratulations, and God bless you.
Thank you. Next up, Congressman Micah.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We hear you.
Well, I am absolutely delighted to join you in recognizing a very special friend and an incredible public servant. I've gotten to work with Mary for, well, I got the opportunity to work with her for ten years. And I can tell you, I think on the first day I met her, I realized that she was a force to be reckoned with. But we had an incredible relationship, and I look back probably some of my most enjoyable public service, thirty-some years, five in the U.S. Senate, twenty-four in Congress, and then I did about four in local government and four in the legislature. And I can't think of anyone I've worked with who has really been as effective and so dedicated and loving to her constituency. And just delighted to join others tonight. Am I, is that you, Mayor Hill, at the helm there?
Yes, sir.
Good, good. Proud of you too and your leadership in the league. That's, that's great. What a great community, you know. My district in Congress first was a large metropolitan area encompassing mostly the Orlando area up to Daytona. And I'm sure everyone was shocked when this guy from Winter Park in central Florida had his, had redistricting, have the, being chosen to represent Putnam County and the City of Palaca. And I guess we're sort of, we were sort of odd fellows, but someone who made me feel at home was Mary Lawson Brown. Working with her, Mayor Flag, and others, I just look back and, you know, it's really rewarding to, it was rewarding for me to have a smaller constituency like Palaca. Anything, you know, is possible in Palaca or in government with people working together. And of course, Mary had her projects and her water taxi project, but we had a lot of things that we did together for the community. Changing out the HUD housing, that horrible HUD high-rise on the waterfront, and allowing those elderly citizens to have a beautiful new accommodations. You'd be proud to have your family. And Emergency Operations Center. I think I remember walking on some cinder blocks and stepping into a trailer, and we ended up working together and had the best, I think it was termed one of the best emergency operations center by the State Director in the state of Florida. So many things, the improvements at the airport, some of the programs, the weed and seed that we did together, the scholarship program that we, we put together for students, again, just numerous opportunities to make Palaca a better community. And incidentally too, Mary, if you can hear this, and Mayor, about two months ago, I was contacted by an investor interested in investing, and he's looking at the Palaca area. In fact, I, I took him up there, and I was pleased to ride through town. Very proud of some of the progress, but it's a city with lots of opportunities for the future. And Mary Lawson Brown helped set the foundation for that in place. It's sometimes very difficult. And local government, you have all the demands and none of the money or resources, but she's, her determination over the years helped make many things happen. I am actually on an island between Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands, and I, I got delayed notice on this. Lucky that my cellphone even works today, but I couldn't wait to join others in saluting just a great public servant, a wonderful human being. Just someone that makes me very proud to have been associated with her. So, Mary, I wish you well. I hope to see you. I have to bring that investor back too, because we discussed some things that there's so much potential for Palaca that we can do, making it better as she did over her nearly four decades of public service. So again, just totally honored to, to be with you tonight, even by Zoom in this difficult time, just to say thank you, Mary. And thank you for the opportunity to, to be of assistance to all the citizens of your community. And you took that little guy from Winter Park by the ear and also helped him to do a lot of good with you. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Congressman. Mayor Morris West, Haynes City, FBC Leo, First Vice President.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening to Ms. Mary Lawson Brown. I'm here on behalf of Florida Black Caucus of Local Electoral officials as the First Vice President, you know. And, and I agree with everything that's been said so far for, for Ms. Mary Lawson Brown. You know, I felt like I've been robbed. And what I mean by that, because I didn't know her long enough. I felt like, you know, I wish I would have known her for those thirty years. I've only known her for, since 2016, when I became a member of our city commission and got to meet her at all of our events for FBC Leo. But what I learned from her in those, in that short period of time, she's like a mother figure. She's a trailblazer. She set her mind on something, and she sticks to it until she gets it done. She don't take no for an answer. She will continually stay on it until it gets done. So I'm here to say, you know, I am proud that I got an opportunity in four years to meet, and, you know, my mother in Palaca. And one thing I'll tell you, when I come to Palaca, they always tell me that, Ms. Mary Lawson Brown, you're not going to leave there until she feeds you. And I'm coming there to get my dinner, Ms. Mary Lawson Brown. I am coming. It is over. So thank you for being the trailblazer that you are. Continue to do what you're doing, and I know, because you've already told me, you ain't never leaving the Florida League of Cities. You coming back at every conference, whether you invited or not, and I'm looking forward to seeing you at those events and meeting you. And tell all my sisters and brothers in your family that you have always introduced us to every meeting. I've been there ever since 2016, and you, every meeting, you introduced me to the same family member. I know your sister, I'm sorry, I know your, your daughter and your grandson. So tell them, you know, good luck to you and wish you all the best in the near future, and I'm looking forward to seeing you real soon, Ms. Brown. I'll be in Palaca soon to see you. Thank you, and God bless you.
Okay. Nancy Harris, former Putnam County Commissioner and Mayor of Crescent City. Ms. Harris on? Nancy Harris. We'll come back to her. John Yu, Airport Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, and thank you for this opportunity to honor Mary. She's just been a stalwart out at the airport as the Commission Liaison, and it was instrumental in so many improvement projects out here, one of which the good Congressman Micah was part of. And this is an award that we received back in 2009 for the terminal building. This was given by the North Florida Regional Council. And that is one project, one of the projects the Congressman mentioned that he worked with Mary Lawson Brown on. So thank you very much for that, and that was really kind of the start of turning this airport around from something Dodge City to a facility that has a viable commercial opportunity in the future. So we're indebted to you, Mary, for this and many other projects and your leadership. We're certainly going to miss you, and we just wish you the best, and please don't make yourself a stranger, and God bless you.
You got Chairman Ofer next to you. Judd, come on in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Brown, on behalf of Wayne McLean, Melissa Miller, John Brown, and Dana Jones, Hugh Rawls, Jeff Hathorn, and Ken Johnson, we want to just say a big thank you, and we're so appreciative of all the effort and energy that you put into our little side of the airport, on the advisory board, and how much you have always had good input and supportive help, and just been a true pleasure for all of us to work with you all these years. And I'd like to mention the twenty-plus million dollars worth of improvements that we've been able to receive and see happen here with very little to no debt compared to the gifts, and along with Andrew Halesko, and of course, under the direction of Mr. Greg Evans with FDOT. You helped us accomplish all this, and thank you from each of us from the bottom of our hearts, and congratulations on a career so wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Sam Carr, President of Bartram Trail Conference and Bartram Trail Society of Florida. Mr. Carr.
There we go. Okay, I got it now. I figured it out. Mary Lawson, it's, it's indeed a pleasure to, to speak to you and, and today because you've been so important to my life, actually, when I came back to Palaca and started doing stuff and everything. You and Nancy Harris were the enablers for me, and I really, really do appreciate it. I've always considered you to be the, the city's mom, the city's grandmom, but actually, you're the city's godmother. That's what you are. And, and we really, your, your leadership and your encouragement and your enthusiasm really carried us forward and enabled us to, to get our riverboat, enabled us to improve the riverfront. And, and the Bartram Trail in Putnam County wouldn't be here if you hadn't, hadn't walked down the road with us, and that's just a fact. And so I really appreciate it. I'm sorry to see that you're retiring, but boy, I'm so happy and pleased for you, and God, God bless you about that. And, you know, you, you opened up every single one of our Bartram Frolics that we had. Every single year, you came down and spoke to us. And, and you will just have been an inspiration to us and our organization and to me personally over these last ten or fifteen years. And I just, God bless you, and, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. Mayor Matt Searcy, former President, Florida League of Mayors, Florida League of Cities, Chair FMIT for Municipal Insurance Trust.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's good to be here. You know, for the longest time, Mary's been telling us that she's going to retire. And so I had to come here in person and see that it's actually happening and verify for everybody across the state that she's actually hanging up and enjoying her retirement. But it's certainly good to be here, and I wouldn't have missed it. It's going to see some great friends that I haven't seen in a while because of COVID and everything going on. But I wanted to just come on behalf of the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, all the trusts really, the League of Cities, the E. Harris Drew Award, we share that as well. And I've been fortunate enough to serve a third of what you've served and serve that with you, but she is really like our godmother. Everybody that's interacted with her can say she is truly like our godmother to anybody across the state. It's not just people here locally. As you can see from the, the display here on YouTube that they've done here with everybody commenting in, but she's always been a part of that. She kept me married. When we went to San Antonio and different places for all these different conferences, she would say, now, Matt, you gotta go down there and get something for your wife. She's back on dealing with those boys. You gotta buy her something and take it home. And she, she not only told me to go down there, but she took me down there and helped me pick out something nice, and I took it home and been married ever since. So thank you for that. But also, you know, one of the advocacy things that she does that a lot of people, probably black, don't realize is how big of an advocate she is for black. Everywhere she goes, she's helping. We'd go in these places and we'd be part of like this fast conference, this federal action strike team, or at Legislative Action Days in Tallahassee. And we'd go up there and then we'd be on a short time schedule, because we gotta get to all of these different places we're going to. And the Legislative aides would tell us, now make sure you just stick to these talking points and make some local flavor, but just stick to these talking points. So we all go around the table and sticking our talking points, our talking points. She's marrying, she's talking about paddle boats. And it's not on our talking points, but she's talking about black and paddle boats, and she's been a huge advocate, and she will continue to be. So thank you for the inspiration you've given us all about how to be a great public servant, and really just a mentor for all of us coming behind you, but then also the future that comes here for Black.
Definitely. Thank you for being here, Mayor. Is there anyone else in Zoom land that I missed out on?
Yes. I'm here. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We hear you.
Well, good. I, I'm sorry, I was stuck. We did, I did Zoom one other time, but I couldn't figure it out tonight. But at least you can hear me, and, and Mary, I'm just so glad to have a chance to say something about you. Mary and I started working together in the nineties when I was Mayor of Crescent City, and we met a lot at the Florida League of Cities. And later, as a Commissioner in the twenties. We belong to the American Heritage Rivers together, and we traveled up and down the whole river and visited all the other cities and attended all the meetings. And we did everything that we could to help bring some of the wonderful developments that are along the river to Putnam County. Mary also takes time to serve to help people who need it, and she served on the Committee with me for Transportation Disadvantaged and known as Ride Solution in Putnam County. And I just, I have to say, Mary, you just never met a stranger. Wherever we went, Mary was there, and she was known far and wide, and she always had a packet of pictures and information about Palaca and Putnam County and the river. And she was just such a delight to work with and has been. And I hope in the future we can still work on some projects, Mary, but you've been a wonderful light for me, and I just appreciate you, and I, I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing other comments, we're going to move to our presentation. Got a little quick slide presentation of the thirty-six years of dedicated service to the citizens of Palaca.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, for all you do.
This is our new Mary Lawson Brown Marina, dedicated last, dedicated in the beginning of this year, just the beginning of COVID. So from now on, historically, we'll always see Mary Lawson Brown in place. And more than anything else, Ms. Brown is leaving us with the phrase that we are better together. She's spent her whole career trying to unify us. And she's done a wonderful job of bringing people from all different walks of life together, making sure that she's committed to the common man. We also have a plaque for COVID protocol. We'll, we'll read the plaque. She has it before her. Presented to Mary Lawson Brown, Vice Mayor and Commissioner, affectionately called the city's mother. For thirty-six years of dedicated service to the citizens of the City of Palaca, we are better together. January 4. January 4th, 2021. And something that's not on that plaque, Mary Lawson Brown is by far, in my estimation, the most well-known citizen in this community. She continually, she will give you every flyer, every mailer, whenever you see her, it's known she's not a handshaker, she's a hugger. She is a person who loves people. We never thought that this day would come, but since this day has come, she already has the key to our hearts. And she has really been a staple in this community, starting out as a mother who was fighting for children, and that's how she ended up running. The young man taking her place is one of the teenagers that was on her original campaign team. And so it just shows you that the tradition carries on from one seat to another. We know she's not leaving us, but we want to make sure that she can always get in here. So we're going to hand her the key to the city. So hold your key up. It doesn't unlock, it doesn't unlock any doors, but it says that you've put 36 years in at this city hall for the citizens of this community and you've earned all the praises that come before you today. We're going to give you your flowers while you yet live. And so again, thank you for all your service. As we move forward, we've got to go to consent agenda this time. Item number four on the consent agenda, it's adopt resolution 2021 R01, concurring with the city manager's recommendation to appoint interim fire chief Chris Taylor as our fire chief.
Second.
Is the motion on the floor in a second? Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Moving on to item five, Chief Chris Taylor's installation as fire chief. First up, we'll bring Mr. Don Holmes on to administer a quick oath and then we'll have the penning.
Chief Taylor, can you hear me? You may need to unmute.
Yes, sir. I can hear you.
Okay. So if you would please, I will read the oath. I'll start by stating aye and then you will repeat your name and then I will continue with a few words and let you catch up with me, okay?
Yes, sir.
So this is oath of office, State of Florida, County of Putnam, and it reads as follows. Aye, comma.
Aye, Chris Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
Constitution and the government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Palatka.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Palatka.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully.
I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of fire chief.
Perform the duties of fire chief.
On which I am now about to enter.
Of which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Chief Taylor.
Thank you, sir.
And now we'll have, now he'll be pinned by his wife Ann Taylor? Oh yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, sir, for this awesome opportunity. Really appreciate it. Won't steer you wrong. Thanks so much.
He's a man of many words. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you all.
If you want to hear Chief talk and get him to talk about the community and about firefighting, but he's a man of few words in some places, but when he gets to his passion, he's all about Palatka. So congratulations, Chief.
Thanks again, sir. Thank you.
Next up, swearing in, new old commissioner, the new Mary Lawson Brown, swearing in Tammy McCaskill, city commissioner for four years. She's got, she's working on another 28 after this. So here we go. She's going to be sworn in by Clerk of Court Matt Reynolds, former finance director and city manager of city of Palatka. She's also, she's got her son Kevin with her.
With your last just a minute, Mayor.
All right. Looks great. And if I could, just a real quick moment, you know, this is a, this is a very special night for a lot of people, Vice Mayor Brown, myself. As Mayor Hill mentioned, I started my career in public service here at city of Palatka and Vice Mayor Brown is the one commissioner that's left on the commission that voted to ratify me as finance director. So I am forever thankful for that. So as I transitioned over to being an elected official, I just want to, I want to thank her for her 36 years of service. And like many other people have said this evening, Vice Mayor Brown is probably the most dedicated person to the city of Palatka and the citizens here in the city that I have ever known. She is a very special lady and I am, I'm so happy to be here. Does that be better? Okay, there we go. That sounds much better. Okay. All right. As city manager Don Holmes mentioned, I'm going to begin reading the oath and it will start with aye and then you'll state your name. So if you will, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida and the charter and ordinances of the city of Palatka. That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Palatka City Commissioner, Group One, of which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida. And that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Palatka City Commissioner, Group Three, on which I am now about to enter.
I'm very proud to have this young man take this seat and Tammy and the rest of our commission. I don't feel bad leaving. I feel excited because I think that y'all have picked a great team and they realize they're better together. Willie, I hope you make as many good friends and have as good a time as I did, sitting at the seat and riding these roads. I made some really good friends and I want to thank all of them for saying all the nice things about me. Thank you very much.
Now, Commissioner Jones, if you take your seat. I'd like to have an amended roll call at this time.
Thank you. We'll call a roll. Mayor Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Rufus Borm.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
And our newly elected Commissioner Willie Jones.
Present.
Thank you.
All members are present. Now we've got our final comments from the commission. Commissioner Borm, you have any final comments for us, sir?
Oh, yes, sir. First, first I'd like to, you know, give a few comments about Vice Mayor Brown for the number of years she's served since 1984, 36 years. I mean, wow. It's nine consecutive terms, been opposed and she still made it through successfully, no issues. So she served with a high degree of integrity, respect, and humility for the community. She served, what, 40, over 43% of her life was dedicated and sacrificed to public service or what have you. So she served on, like again, local, state, regional, national boards, just leaving her family to do these things to provide public service to help make her community better. Notwithstanding the other service that she provided to the community as well as it related to her funeral home service, which stood for 107 years this year. She served people on the front end of life and during her, during their life and then on the backside of their life when they no longer live. And so she's a true servant to our community 360 degrees. She's, some of the things that she's accomplished, she saved the train station, she done thing with, fight for the Greyhound bus station to be, to be there. She acquired a million dollar grant for the water taxis. She's got the incubator initiated. We just got to complete that. And she's, we, she's earned and dedicated the Marina to her in her honor as well. So she's just have so many success, successes and accolades. I can't, I'm only going to name a few. Honored and recognized for the Florida League of Cities Lifetime Achievement Award, Hometown Hero Award, among others. I won't go through the whole list. And again, she served God, her family, and the entire community, many sacrifices away from family and friends lobbying both local, state, regional, nationally. Her footprints, her fingerprints is pretty much on everything. I mean, anywhere you go, everybody knows Mary Lawson Brown or what have you. She's a true ambassador for the city. She'll be ever remembered. I'm going to cut some of my comments, but I want to say I got a special connection with Mary Lawson Brown that when I first moved to Palatka, her son Maurice Brown recruited me here from Florida AM University and she opened her domicile up to me. I was a young, struggling graduate student who needed some ends to meet. I didn't have my place of, my living arrangement squared away. So she allowed for me to live with her for a week or so to get my place squared away. So we have a special connection. I have 28 years of being in her family per se. I call her my mom. She is the mother of Palatka, the gem city, and if I can just say one word to describe her, she is amazing. Vice Mayor Brown, you're always been a great mentor, a friend, and my mother in Palatka. I love you. I wish you the very best. And on your retirement, I would just call it a lunch break. You're not going to stop working. So I will leave it at that. My family, we got you a bouquet of flowers and just want to give you a flower while you live. So thank you for all you've done for me and many others you've mentored throughout your political career. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I would like to echo everything that Commissioner Borm said. She's played a vital role to so many, in so many different capacities. And I'm eternally grateful for the bond that we have with our family. My aunt was a dear friend of Vice Mayor Brown and was on her campaign trail team as well. And for me to be able to sit beside Ms. Brown for the last six years, she has tremendously empowered me as a commissioner and a lot of the things that I've accomplished as a commissioner to serve on the state level, I attribute to her mentorship and her pushing and her introducing us to the individuals who she have and introduced us to. But additionally, I know like Commissioner Brown, I mean Commissioner Borm said, this is only a lunch break for some, the work has ended for others, the work continue. Commissioner McCaskill, I'm happy to be able to serve with you for another four years. Commissioner Jones, I'm happy that you are on board with us now and you can continue to help us move this city forward.
Mayor, can I, can I make another statement? I got caught up.
Sure.
Sorry about that. But I got caught up in Vice Mayor Brown's retirement and I forgot to commend Commissioner McCaskill for her dedicated service to the city. And I just want to thank her for working alongside of her with the many successes we've had over the last four years for me and six, but for her four. And I want to thank her for signing up for another four years to provide the community service or what have. So, and again, I want to welcome Commissioner Willie Jones to the board. I look forward to working alongside you as well and we want to continue to move this city forward. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McCaskill.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also say to Vice Mayor Brown, thank you for the encouragement you've given me. I want to thank your family for sharing you with us. I was scared when I started this thing, but you constantly gave me the motivation and encouragement I needed and you took me under your wing and I tell you, took me places and introduced me to everyone, you know. I just want to thank you for what you've done for the city and what you've done for me personally. I just wanna thank you for what you've done for the city and what you've done for me personally. I also wanna thank the citizens of Palacka for allowing me to serve another four years in this capacity. I'm, I'm looking forward to helping to, to continue to improve the quality of lives of our citizens. And I also wanna welcome Commissioner Will Jones aboard. So thank you. I'm looking forward to working beside you, beside you.
Commissioner Jones, first comments.
First, I would like to say thank you to all the voting public here in the city of Palacka, uh, for their vote of confidence. Put me in this seat. And, uh, also to Ms. Brown, uh, for her thirty-six years of service here. And longer serving our community, again, I have to dito, being a community mom and being a mentor. And, uh, she's the inspiration for people like myself running for political office. And know that she make it look easy, but I know it isn't. But I'm looking forward to, for the challenge. Ms. Brown is small in stature and we all know, but she's a firecracker. And, um, she's small in stature with large shoes to fill. And I wanna make this promise to you, Ms. Brown and the citizens of Palacka. I know they have big shoes to fill, but I'm gonna do my best. And that's what I promise you and all the citizens. Do my best to fill those shoes. I look forward to working with the, the citizens, uh, this, this commission and, uh, the city of Palacka and the county of Putnam to be better together. Thank you.
Thank you. There's really not much more you can say about Mary Lawson Brown. It didn't have to be said. It's been said over and over again. And anytime you mention her, the same words gonna come out. She's just an awesome person who's been committed to this community. But I think the roster of people who were lined today, um, tells a story. You know, from Congressman Micah with his shirt on to, to everyone else, he's in the islands. And all across, you know, Senator Gibson and, and everyone else who was assembled across the board. It was a board of superstars who were here to celebrate a superstar. Thirty-six years of service. But I think the most, the most compelling piece of it all to me is the fact that the torch gets passed on to someone who was a teenager watching all of that. And so for me, I'm really excited about Will Jones coming on board. Because in nineteen eighty-four, he was a teenager. He was a high schooler who got involved in politics because of his family and because of the things that Ms. Brown talked about. And now he's a part of this commission and that torch has been passed on from the person who got him involved in politics. And now he sits in that seat and I'm looking for him to do great things. Commissioner McCaskill, four years later, you're blossoming. You're gonna continue to blossom and this community is gonna continue to grow because of your leadership. And so we're excited about that as well. Congratulations to Chris Taylor, our new fire chief. We are just awes, we're just excited. There's so many wonderful things going on in this city. It's the what's happening city. We are, we are reshining the gem of the St. John's River. And if you're not on the way, you're in the way. And so we're just gonna let you know right now that as we move this community forward, we don't lose people. We just, we just change seats. Because all we do is add on to what we've got because it's a community that's the last snapshot of what old Florida looks like. And we're gonna continue to blossom. We're gonna continue to grow together and we're gonna be better together. And so as we transition out of this meeting at this time, we wanna make sure we pay homage to the thirty-six years, but also to the future of the city of Palacka. And so we are eternally thankful for everyone's presence today. We are thankful for those thirty-six years of service. And we are just excited about what the future's got in store for the city of Palacka. And so again, thank you to the staff and all the work that they've done to make this swearing in ceremony. Uh, as wonderful as it is under the circumstances, as we still continue on with the pandemic. But even the pandemic will not stop the process of this community, uh, the progress of this community. We're gonna stand together. We're gonna weather the storm and we're gonna move forward. So at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Could I have a point of privilege, Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
Mr. Mayor, could I have a point of privilege?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Not to cast any sort of power on this joyous occasion, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't note that we lost one of our own this week, this weekend.
Thank you.
And, um, and, uh, I know that the commission joins with me and, um, in wanting to recognize the fact that we lost a, a member of our team, a member of our family, someone who's been with the city for quite a long while. And, uh, I think that, uh, we all know that we've been through some times this last week, last ten, fifteen days. But I guess it, uh, all brings in the perspective, it is brought into perspective when, when you actually lose one, one of the people that's made your team function and operate. So, uh, with that having been said, I appreciate the opportunity to mention that.
Okay, can we have a moment, let's have a moment of silence at this time. We will have a moment of silence for our respect to the family at this time. So everyone, please bow your heads. Thank you. So as we mourn and as we move forward, we're gonna continue to progress in the city. And Mr. Holmes, thanks you, thank you for, for that point of privilege. And at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now adjourned.